To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. The first order of business is public comment. We're going to receive oral communications from members of the public. Members of the public may address the select board for up to three minutes. The select board shall not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to fifteen minutes. Is there any public comment tonight?
I'm B. Marshall.
Please come on up here. You name an address, please.
Ryan Kelly, twenty-four School Street.
Hi, Ryan.
Um, I would like to address lack of a response of emails that I sent to select board Matthews and select, so select board Hacker after the last select board meeting, at which there was a cultural council vote, in which they both voted no for appointing me onto the cultural council. So I would like to know if they received their emails to their professional emails, and if they did, why they did not respond.
I did not.
I have not seen them either. I certainly would have responded.
Great. Well, for the public, I said, "Good evening, I hope you had a great Memorial Day and that your week is going well. I'm emailing to ask what your reasoning was for voting no on my appointment onto our local cultural council. As a non-political committee whose purpose is to award money to local arts and nonprofit organizations, as well as local cultural slash creative professionals, I would like to think having new volunteers that are young, connected, and active in our community will be a great asset to this committee. I look forward to your, your reasoning, as well as any feedback or opinions on how else I can get involved in our amazing town."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, David, if you could look into why they didn't receive their emails and forward them on, and ask that do you respond to? Do you want, would you like to respond here?
No.
Great. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to see the emails first.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Marshall.
Good evening, I'm Marshall Jespersen, one sixty-nine Elm Street in Byfield. I am up for reappointment to the capital planning committee. And since there are some people who have not been acquainted with me in the first appointment to capital planning, I thought I'd get up and give you a little bit of my background and qualifications before you get to vote.
Okay.
I've been...
Excuse me, I, I'm gonna ask, 'cause I only have three minutes. When we get to that appointment, I'm gonna ask you to...
Oh, in that case, I'll wait.
Okay. Uh, is that okay with the board?
Yes.
I think that's appropriate. Okay. Is there any other public comment? Come on up, Steve.
Hi, I'm Steve Manchin on Fourteenth Street in Newbury. And I just wanted publicly, for the moment at least, fall on my sword. I've been a longtime critic of the Plum Island bathrooms. But I must say, from what I've seen and heard to date, it's gone swimmingly well. And I just wish to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's good. Awesome. Thank you, Steve.
That's very good, very good fe- feedback.
Tony said the same thing.
Great. Okay. Is there any other public comment tonight? Okay. Uh, seeing that, grants, gifts, and donations. We have a council on aging gift for a central congregational church, uh, for five hundred dollars. I want to entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
I can just tell you in discussion that, that, uh, this church also sponsors the, uh, the chocolate event.
Okay.
And they donate two thousand dollars to the council on aging. So this five hundred is in addition to what they've already given to them.
Oh, wonderful.
It's great, great support.
The chocolate torch?
Yes.
Okay.
That's great. Grateful for their support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, donation to the police department gifts fund from Alfred and Sandra Bellows in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. I want to entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion around this? All in favor? Aye. Okay, we're going to approve, uh, a request for public property use, special permit, uh, use of World War II memorial at the Byfield Monument on August seventh, National Purple Hat Day for presentation of the wreath from seven to PM to seven forty-five PM by Bill DeMayo. Bill, do you wanna speak to this?
Uh, this will be the third year that, um, we're doing what we said we'd do. The town is doing what they said they'd do when they had the declaration of, uh, declaring Newbury a purple hat town. We said that on August seventh, which is National Purple Hat Day, we would do something publicly to acknowledge the day and to, uh, show gratitude to those who made that sacrifice.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, any further, any discussion on what it is? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, appointments. The first one is Marshall Jespersen for capital planning committee, two years. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, motion and a second, discussion.
Motion to appoint.
Yeah. Marshall, can you please stand and finish what you were gonna say?
Okay. Still Marshall Jespersen, one sixty-nine Elm Street, and a reappointment to capital planning committee. I thought I would get up and give you a little background as to my qualifications to be a member of that committee. Uh, my undergraduate, graduate work was in sciences chemistry, specifically along with a graduate degree in business, with a specialization in finance. I have been a, uh, business owner, and specifically, we have financed a number of large projects, over the years, and so I'm quite familiar with that process and the capital planning process, as we have used it both here and our business. It's a, it's an important part of the whole budget process for the town. We, I think, have made great strides. I've been here since the first days of our capital planning bylaw, and, uh, we've had some very good people, and I think have done some excellent work. I look forward to continuing that work with your, uh, with your foreparents.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Yes, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
I noticed on your letter of interest that you requested one more year.
I thought, did I say one year or one term?
For one more year.
Oh, I thought it was a one-year appointment.
It's gonna be two years?
That's fine.
It's three.
I thought it was three.
Well, it was, well, David, you wanna speak, speak to that?
The bylaw...
We're having issues with fixing our bylaw terms.
The CVC bylaw as it exists states to...
So, you'll be appointed for two years?
Correct.
This, this time.
That's fine.
And then...
Should you please?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I just wanna say that, that Marshall...
Yeah, that is right there.
Marshall has been on the finance committee. He has helped the town since its inception.
Oh, no.
Of, um...
Right. That's what she wanted you to talk about.
Oh, yeah, it is a two-year term.
Yeah. I, I have the bylaw right here. It's a, it's a two-year appointment.
Yeah. So Marshall has been here since we founded the capital planning bylaw and founded the capital planning committee. His work has been, um, immeasurable, honestly, to the town of Newbury to get us where we are in our fines, financial si- situation now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I, I would just like, not about, uh, Marshall in particular, but in light of the annual town meeting, how is the capital planning gonna look? Like, in the next, in the next year or two?
So, right now, the capital planning, the select board appoints two capital planning members.
Correct.
We have, I think it's Stuart is on there. Or no, Nick, Nick.
No, no, Stu.
Nick is on there. Nick Orm is on there. Um, he was appointed last year. Marshall's appointed this year for a two-year term. The town administrator by per capital planning bylaw sits on it as well. And once our amendment that we voted Article nineteen at town meeting gets, goes through the general court and it cuts, kicks, it's getting through...
So it's gonna stay a committee of three?
No, it'll be a committee of five. Soon as it goes through...
No, 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 but before it goes through.
Yeah.
Right now, it's gonna, it's gonna be a committee of three until it goes through the four sixty process and gets revised.
Right, and then once it goes... Right, and then once it goes through and we get, um, approval from the general court, the finance committee will appoint two more people.
Do you, Dave, do you have any idea how long that process might take?
No idea. I mean, at this point, they're kinda closing out to, to the July session, so it could be very soon or it could not be until the fall.
Got you.
So capital planning, I don't think that kicks up until the fall anyways. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, all capital, um, I think requests are due to the town by November first, so.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you.
Okay, Mary Rimmer for the conservation commission. This is gonna be for three years. This is a typo on our, on our agenda. I want to entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary here? Okay. Mary has been a long-serving member of the con- conservation commission. She was the vice chair. She does excellent work. Smart, smart member. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The town's thankful that Mary continues to serve. Okay, Geraldine DeMayo, council on aging, three years. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do you wanna recuse yourself, Mr. DeMayo?
I better.
Yeah, you better.
You can just go sit over there. Okay, so, I have a, a, a motion and a second for Geraldine DeMayo for the council on aging. Any discussion on this one? Geraldine's been serving now for, I think, two years, is it?
This is... No, this, yeah, it was a one-year last year and a one-year this year.
Okay, so she'll be...
Because they have to rotate the number of years.
Right. So this'll be for three years. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you.
For serving.
Thank you for serving.
I have a question on that though, yeah, not about Geraldine. Um, I noticed there's two other people that their terms are running out. Will they be, um, showing, putting a letter of interest in?
Could be that we haven't heard back yet, um...
My understanding is that Joyce Macheros chooses not to be reappointed to that board. And, and I, I, uh, I believe that John Ferrara is the other person, and I believe she'll be submitting a letter.
Thank you.
Joyce will be missed.
Joyce, yeah, she served the town well. She was the chair for a while.
I know, I just want to say on behalf of Joyce, she has a lot of things going on in her life, and she has done quite a bit. And it, that's why she really can't...
Thank you. Say, cultural council. Heidi Fram for three years. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Okay, discussion on this one. These, uh, these two were appointed back in March. Hyde, both Heidi and Barb, we haven't gotten to Barb yet. Um, the cultural council by Massachusetts General Law only comes together to give out grants. So they, um, I guess, reappointed her, but they haven't met yet, so we need to reappoint her again. So, all in favor of Heidi?
Aye. Aye.
Um, Barb Lucy, again, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Discussion. This is Guinness for three years. Same thing that happened with Heidi. All in favor?
Aye.
Historical commission. Before we get to these three members, this also is, there was some typos on this one. They're all three-year terms. There is a, um, alternate, or is it alternate or associate, uh, historical commission member that did not choose to be reappointed, so that seat is open. The historical commission, I have Lon Hackmeister for three years. I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, motion to appoint.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Richard Moran for three years. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Any discussion? Rich is here. Rich, did you wanna say anything?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Rebecca Fuller for three years.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rich, for serving. Uh, Lynn Peabody, the human resources board, for three years. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Lynn, did you wanna come up and say something?
I do, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just, and I see that many people are not coming up, but since I'm here, I thought, and, um, I liked the letter that I wrote expressing my interest, so if I could read it?
Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, dear members of the town of Newbury Select Board, I'm writing to express my interest in continuing my appointment to the human resources board to the town of Newbury, Massachusetts. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time on this board. I feel that I have contributed both personally as a member of our community and as an HR professional with a strong career in human resources, including experience in both not-for-profit and for-profit settings. I am also able to contribute to the work of the HR board, drawing on my experience as a board of trustee member while sitting on the board of trustees of a community college for over a decade in an elected position. My academic career also allows me to make sound, thoughtful recommendations. I've attached my resume to this letter for reference. I feel that the members of the HR board have valuable experience, and our discussions are intelligent, thoughtful, and challenging. The recommendations that we make as a board are well thought out and respectful of the town employees, as well as the residents of the town of Byfield slash Newbury. And then, please let me know if I can provide any additional information relating to my expression of interest. That said, I just feel like, um, as I mentioned, I really enjoyed this board, you know, and this is my profession. I've been in HR for a long time. I, in my resume, um, I continue to work in human resources. I work for BILH, uh, supporting two hospitals. And so I think that the experience I bring to the, this table really is of value, and, um, I would appreciate being reappointed.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn. I, I'm, I'm so, thank you for coming up and reading that and giving us a little history on that. Um, we have such talented residents. Thank you for volunteering your time with us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Well said, and I'll...
Okay. Any questions of Lynn? Before we ask her to, or let her sit back down.
That's a tough, tough job, that's all I can say.
Yeah, it's not easy.
What, this or BILH?
HR in general.
Absolutely. Yeah, but I really enjoy it. I've had great experiences. The companies that I've worked for, um, and I've attached my resume, you know, for reference. But it's been terrific to be in the positions that I've had, and I've learned and grown, and, you know, I just, it's a passion.
Well, I'm glad you brought your skill set to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Can we do a motion to appoint?
We, yep, when we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Okay, the Lower Green Historic District Study Committee, Joy Mouchard for one year. I'll entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I believe Joy's here. Did you wanna come up and speak, or?
Good evening, everyone. So I am the vice chair of the Lower Green, um, Local Historic District Study Committee, which is a mouthful to say, and I often, uh, get it messed up. I have a letter of intent from our chair, Robin Etheridge, that I'd like to submit to you, if that's okay.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. That's all I wanna say.
Is that, um, for Robyn's?
It is for Robyn's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Reappointment. We'll just get that on our next agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Joy. Okay. Any questions of Joy? No, no. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Joy, thank you again for serving on that, on that committee. Okay, Lon Hackmeister, he is the, um, the historical commission's, um, designee to the Lower Green Historic District Study Committee for this. So, we need to appoint him?
Motion to appoint, second.
Okay, any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Lon. Uh, Peter Pecos, the MVPC commissioner.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
These are recommendations from the planning board. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Larry Murphy as the MVPC alternate commissioner.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we have Steve Manchin for the planning board, a one-year appointment.
May I just clarify, that's the associate member of the planning board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, planning boards are elected. This is associate?
Yep.
Thank you, Martha.
Just gonna ask.
Um, so, Steve Manchin, the associate member of the planning board for one year. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint, second.
Second.
Steve is here. Thank you, Steve. Did you wanna say anything? Come on, say anything.
Briefly.
Yeah.
I certainly hope I get your vote to be reappointed. I've been on for just a few months now, so I'm still on a big learning curve. And I'm looking forward to more. Served on a number of other committees, uh, for the town, including the master plan. And I think that as the master plan, you know, ages, now that it's been passed, there'll be a lot of interesting issues regarding Plum Island and perhaps even things like the Great Marsh. It'll be of great interest to me as a geologist to serve, uh, as a non-voting associate member. And heaven forbid, there may be some issues that come up. It would require me to vote on some, but that hasn't happened yet.
You might need to... Yeah, well, you might.
So, again, I hope I have your support, as I have had for the, from the planning board, when they move the nomination forward.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Steve? Steve, thank you for stepping up and serving.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
I have a motion, do I have a motion and a second, Davis? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Rec- Recreation Committee, these are one-year appointments per our bylaw. Courtney Boudreau. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Courtney for one year.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
I don't see Courtney here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John Reagan, same thing, one year.
Motion to appoint, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cindy Currier, she's the council on aging rep. She's kind of voluntold. Um, I'll have, entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And David Brol for one year. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion.
I know that you're required to put a letter of interest in, and I don't see one in the packet. It's right in front of me here. Doesn't... Yes, I will.
Yeah, so...
Do we vote?
Following up on the previous email, if you could let me know if you were interested in being reappointed, please send a letter of interest to the select board. His letter is, yes, I will.
I'm reading that as, "Please send a letter of intent to the select board," and the answer was, yes, I will.
He's asking him if he would, if you were interested in being re- reappointed. So yes, he will say, yes, I, yes, I am.
But this reads, "Yes, I will," which says, "Please send a letter of intent to the select board," which he answers, "Yes, I will."
Okay.
Will, you know.
He does want to serve.
I, I guess, is that the way you interpreted? 'Cause I didn't even look at it that way, actually, so...
I interpreted that he wanted to serve.
As he wa- he wants to serve. That's the, yeah, okay.
Yeah, me too.
Do we vote?
Nope.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Michelle Wielder, zoning board of appeals. Middler, sorry. Is Michelle here?
Motion to appoint, second.
Okay, any discussion? Uh, this is a one-year appointment, um...
And is this for the, she's currently the associate member?
I think she's the associate member, yeah, 'cause Mario, Eric, and Jack are the, are the three zoners.
The zoners, right.
So, she's the associate member, so it's a one-year appointment. Again, I think, think she's a non-voting member, too.
She steps in, um, they're a little different from the planning board. If they don't have quorum, she steps in, so she does vote on some of the applications before them.
Okay. Thank you, Martha. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I know she's very, um, qualified and thankful that she serves. That's an important board for us.
I mean, that's a tough board.
Yeah.
And Martha, we don't have a tremendous amount of depth in that board, do we, or do we? Meaning, if we got enough people all the time?
It's a three-member board.
It's a three-member board. And I know there's actually been some discussion about trying to expand it to five, five members.
I mean, at some time, if anyone wants to be on a board, that would be a good board to go on, so...
They have to understand our bylaws. They have to know how to read the set of plans. I mean, ZBA is a big...
Eric's done a great job on that board.
Yeah.
Fortunately, they've got two architects, Eric and Michelle. Who are doing great, great.
Um, that's something maybe I, I should talk to Eric about, or the chair. I don't even think he, I think Mario's the chair.
No, Eric's the chair.
Eric's the chair.
Eric's the chair, yeah.
I could talk to him and see, maybe next year, if we want to expand that. We'll have to bring it to town meeting, 'cause it makes it easier for him to have depth of his board. Okay, so next on the agenda is select board member appointments, Eastern Essex District Department of Veteran Services. Uh, we do have a letter from Dana. He's our current member, um...
I was gonna say, that would be me.
Yep, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint Dana.
Motion, motion to appoint.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I won't vote.
Thank you for serving. No, you can vote, you can say it.
Oh, I can vote.
You can vote, too.
Oh, I, I can vote.
You can not vote for your wife.
You can vote.
That's, that's the difference. Um, thank you for serving on that board.
Thank you for having me. Um, um, I enjoy it very much.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have the Triton District Communications Committee. We appoint, we need to, we have a new, since we have a new board this year, it's same but new. And we need to appoint two, two members. Currently, Leslie and Jeff serve on that. I guess I'll take interest from the board. Does anybody wanna continue to serve on one? Would you wanna continue?
Me also.
You two wanna continue?
I would love to have them continue.
Anybody else have a burning desire?
Can I make a motion?
Please do.
I would make a motion that Jeff and Leslie continue on the ECC.
Thank you. I'll second that. All right, any discussion? Thank you both for serving on that.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we have the Triton District Communications Committee. This is the facilities subcommittee. This is the one that I currently sit on. Um, Tracy's my alternate, and David is the alternate alternate.
Alternate alternate.
When we can't make it, um, I would like to continue this. We've only met a couple times, so...
Motion to appoint Alicia, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have, the last one is the Whittier Agreement Task Force. This is something that may or may not continue, but we need to put somebody on because we're a new board now. Bill has served on it before. He's familiar with it. This is, uh, Mayor Riordan's task force to look at Whittier agreement. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint Bill. Bill, do you want it? That's my ques- I'll second, I'll second it. And I just wanna ask you if you wanted...
You still want it?
You still want it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you. New business, overview of the Merrimack Valley Regional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is now available for public comment through June twenty-eighth. That should be in, in front of you. There's another document. You wanna come up and introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'd love to. Thank you for having me tonight. My name's Hannah Mogensen, and I'm with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. And also, thank you to David and Martha for coordinating our presentation here. We have been working closely with Newbury over the last eighteen months to update their hazard mitigation plan. This has been part of a larger regional process, the Merrimack Valley Region Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Essentially, FEMA requires that all communities have a hazard mitigation plan and then conduct updates every five years to keep it active. We are winding down our process, and we're finally at the place where we have a final plan that we can present, so we wanted to share it with you tonight. As part of a brief presentation, I'll tell you a little bit about hazard mitigation plans. I'll highlight some of the findings from New- Newbury's process, and then I'll show you, um, where you can actually find this whole plan and comment on it during the public comment period. So I'll just take about ten minutes of your time, if that's all right?
Thank you.
Of course. Sorry, don't mind going to the next slide. Thanks, David. So, in general, hazard mitigation plans essentially outline a community's long-term strategy to reduce the loss of life and property that can occur from natural disasters. As I mentioned, this plan is a FEMA requirement. It does need to be updated every five years. David, if you don't mind advancing, um, the first regional plan was conducted in, uh, two thousand and eight, and we did conduct an update, the next slide, in two thousand and sixteen. So as you can see, we are outside of that five-year requirement, which is why we're working really diligently to try to get this back in place. Having a, um, active plan does provide a number of benefits to the community. The first is that going through this process allows a community to assess their risk to these vulnerabilities. You get a sense of what are the hazards that can really impact your community and where do those vulnerabilities exist. The second is that, as part of this planning process, you arrive at a set of recommendations... The second is that, as part of this planning process, you arrive at a set of recommendations that the community can actually take to try to reduce their vulnerability and risk over the next five years. The last benefit, and I think one that's most exciting for our communities, is that it immediately qualifies your community to apply for and receive federal funding, that you can actually use to advance these projects as well. If you don't mind David. So, as part of this regional update, we do have ten communities that are going through the process with us, one of those is Newbury, and Newbury has been involved in the creation of the plan, as well as the last update. Being able to do this regional approach allows us to work directly with the community to identify your local needs and, and actions to advance. But it also allows us to tackle, um, challenges that exist across municipal borders, so that we can leverage funding and technical resources to try to, um, address these challenges as well. This is a, um, busy, but, uh, overview of, um, what we've been up to over the last eighteen months. So the first step, and I'll do, I'll talk through this very quick, but the first step was to form local planning teams, that's in number one on the far left. Essentially, we knew that to update this plan, we needed folks at the local level that could come in and share with us what was actually happening and what the needs were. Once we had our teams formed, um, we reviewed the two thousand sixteen plan, as we did have a good basis to start from, and that really informed where we needed to do the update. The first thing we did as part of the update in step three was to assess our natural hazards. We are experiencing hazards to different, to a different intensity and different frequencies than we were back in two thousand sixteen. And there are also new hazards that we wanted to consider as part of this update. Following that step, we conducted a community inventory to understand where the most vulnerable resources in our communities existed, so we could really safeguard those as part of our planning. In step, I have to count now, it's too far, there are five, we were able to assess vulnerability by overlaying where those natural hazards were occurring with where our known resources were, to figure out where that vulnerability really existed. And from that, each team created a mitigation action plan and associated maintenance plan, to be able to try to advance those over the next five years. We are finally in step eight, which is our, um, community engagement, so we do have the plan out for public comment now. And following the public pa- comment period, we will look to finalize the plan and ultimately bring it back to each of our select boards and city councils for their adoption. It's important to note that this is not a binding plan, this sets out, uh, a set of recommendations that you can follow. So after five years, if the things you've laid out in the plan are not achieved, you are not beholden to it as a community. At that point, you're able to just reassess what your new goals are and outline them in the next plan update. So I wanted to highlight just a few, um, outcomes from Newbury's update process. The first was to show you who was on this local planning team, this was spearheaded by Martha Taylor, so thank you Martha for, um, answering all my many emails. Um, and Kristen as well, provided a lot of support. Um, but beyond that, um, Martha pulled together a really dynamic team here in Newbury. We have folks representing our emergency management departments, our fire and police, our planning departments, building commissioners, we have, um, DPW, as well as our conservation department, and our health director. So we really did have a great group of people who are able to share diverse perspectives as part of this update. Once we had our team together, the first update, as I mentioned, was to reassess our natural hazards. Uh, these are, oftentimes can be predicted, they are things like our intense winter storms, our coastal erosion, our invasive species. Uh, and we, because they are connected to our weather patterns and climate patterns, we are able to predict them and to plan for them. The state outlines fifteen potential hazards that can impact all of Massachusetts, so our teams went through each of these fifteen, and using a set of four criteria, if you don't mind advancing David. Um, these are locations, so where in the community are they occurring, and how broadly in the community do they occur. Um, the second criteria was severity and extent, so the duration and magnitude. We also looked at previous occurrence, so how frequently have they occurred in the past, and we also used best available climate data to look at future probabilities as well. And using these four criteria, the Newbury team, um, assessed all the fifteen hazards and ultimately came up with a risk assessment, um, rubric for all the natural hazards, which will be on the next slide. I know this is a little far to see, so I'll talk you through it, there was essentially six hazards that the team identified as high, based on a set of four criteria. Those are coastal flooding, coastal and riverine erosion, drought, extreme temperature, severe winter storms, and hurricanes and tropical storms. The team identified four as moderate hazards, these are inland flooding, high winds and thunderstorms, invasive species and wildfires. And four that they identified as low, tsunamis, tornadoes, earthquakes, and landslides. Once we had this full list of hazards, we were able to take our second step, which was to update our known resources, or we call our community lifelines. These are essentially all of the services across the community that we need on a day-to-day basis to be able to function. They include things like our hospitals and healthcare centers, our, um, grocery stores, our emergency management facilities, uh, fire and, and, uh, police departments, as well as our utilities, and anything else that's really on a day-to-day basis. Once we had our full list, we integrated them into a map series, and we had three maps. So I'll show those to you, but they are a little far away, so please just know, if you look at the plan, you'll be able to see these up close. So in the first map, we overlaid all of our natural hazards with those known, um, community lifelines, to get a sense of where the overlap was. Uh, the hazards that we looked at were things like increased land surface temperature, which tells us where we're experiencing extreme heat in the community. We also looked at hurricane tracks, um, earthquake and tornado occurrences, um, as well as a lot of our flooding, so our floodplain layers, as well as our, um, storm surge layers. We also looked at, uh, slope instability too. Now, as you can see, it's really hard to see this even on this map, and if you go one more time, David, you'll see a zoomed-in image, but even that's hard to see. And so we wanted to get to understand where in our community are we most vulnerable to natural hazards. So what we did is we created a composite map by overlaying all of the natural hazards that can occur in one area. If you move to the next map, the next map, David. And this, um, shows you by color the locations that are, have, uh, an opportunity to experience the most natural hazards. So the darker the color, the more natural hazards can occur in that location. I, I'm sure it's no news to you, as being a coastal community, that we're seeing the darkest red right along the coast there. And those are the locations in which we can experience, uh, the most overlay, or the most, um, uh, highest number of our natural hazards in one location. The last step we did was we wanted to project out and get a better sense of how climate change is going to impact some of these natural hazards. The three best data sets we can really use for projections are looking at, um, coastal flooding, changes in temperature, and changes in precipitation. Um, you can see from afar on the right, we have some purple coming in, which is indicating our coastal flooding, it projected in two thousand and fifty. Uh, the rest of the region all looks kind of the same, and that just means that we are gonna see increased temperature and increased precipitation, but we're all gonna experience it kind of to the same degree here in the Merrimack Valley. This just gives you a sense of what the team used in terms of data for their planning. With this map, with these maps, we were able to ultimately, um, take the next step, which was to look, uh, which was to develop challenge statements for each of these hazard areas, thanks David, that'll be the next one. Our challenge statements looked at the specific natural hazard, the problem that it posed, and the associated risk that it had on the community. So, Newbury had a total of eleven hazard statements, I'm not gonna read each one of them, but I do wanna just summarize and highlight some of the main themes. Um, so the first hazard, if you go to the next one, it'll show, thank you, perfect. Um, the first was talking about extreme precipitation and flooding events, which really pose a risk to critical infrastructure all across town. But especially, um, those infrastructures that we really rely on, like the Olga Way Sewer Pump Station, which is located in one of our floodplains. The team also identified flooding, um, as having a number of additional impacts on the community, especially when paired with sea level rise and major storm events. Which can do things like limit access to parts of the community, like Plum Island, as well as inland locations that flood. The team also identified coastal flooding, which can pose, um, a risk to a lot of residences, buildings, and infrastructure out on Plum Island. The next set of statements on the next slide will continue to indicate some of these challenges that the team articulated. Severe erosion was one of these, that we feel, um, especially, um, prevalently out on Plum Island, for the residents there, in which we've lost a number of homes and put infrastructure at risk. The team also identified that erosion can cause challenges to, um, some of our river systems as well, like the Parker River, which can have impacts on the associated salt marsh, and some of our other, um, important habitats that border those coastal wetlands. The group also identifies severe drought, on the other hand, um, we have experienced that as well, although we have been thinking a lot about flooding over the last year. Severe drought can pose a challenge to water supply across the community, and also to private well systems. Uh, the next few identify extreme temperatures, both high temperatures and low temperatures, which can have impact on human health, as well as our, um, utility systems that we rely on. Extreme lows can also cause freezing, which can have negative impacts on our sewer systems and infrastructure. This is also, um, reiterated through severe winter storms, which can have a huge range of impacts on the community. Everything from, um, coastal erosion and inland flooding, to, um, cutting off main access routes, and, um, causing challenges to our electrical wires above ground, which can cause downed, um, lines during storm events. I have just two more for you, um, hurricanes and tropical storms were also identified, of course, the impacts they can have for our coastal beaches, as well as flooding. And lastly, inland flooding, which can, um, be caused by precipitation events, can cause problems with drainage, especially in locations where we have undersized culverts or outdated infrastructure. So, huge range, the team really did a good job of diving into these and thinking about all of the, of the hazards that can impact the community. Using these, uh, the last step in the process, the update process, was to identify a range of mitigation actions that could be taken by the community to address some of these concerns. Um, the local planning team here put forth sixteen potential actions, I'm not gonna read through all of them, but I do wanna just highlight, um, what they look like in the plan. For each of these actions, there is a matrix, and this is what has been handed out to the board here as well. Um, there, uh, for each action, it describes the action itself, on the first one, we have here in the second column, it's seeking funding to implement recommendations of the two thousand and ten Gomez and Sullivan feasibility study. Which was to remove the Larkin Mill Dam on the Parker River. For each of these actions, we discuss the category of the actions, so in this case, it would be a structural project that was being put forth. The hazard that it addressed was also identified, in this case flooding, as was the group at the local level that would really be instrumental in championing this effort. In this case, the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, Select Board Concom, and Conservation Agents. Each of the action was also prioritized by going through a thorough process and considering a range of ten different, um, categories, including things like funding feasibility, capacity, and, um, positive impacts to the safety of community members. We also identified the timeframe and cost of each action, as well as the resources that could help to advance it, and we provided a project update for each one, based on where we are now. So these are just two, if you go to the next slide, David, you'll see that there are a lot more that the group has put forth, including things like enhancing early warning systems for natural hazards, purchasing illuminated message boards. Um, focusing on, um, Plum Island beach erosion and flooding access, and developing and implementing updated stormwater management plans and others. So, just encourage you to feel free to take a, a look at these, as I think they really set forth, um, a nice range of actions that the town can take over the next five years. So that was a, a brief highlight of the plan, it is a three hundred-page document. Mm-hmm, I really recommend you use that table of contents, cause we do have ten communities in this, but you can navigate right to Newbury's sections and review those, as you'd like. Uh, the plan is up for public comment on the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission website, and has been amplified by the town, so thank you to those for getting those out there. It will remain open through June twenty eighth, and as I said, we're accepting public comment from anyone who has additions to make or questions on the plan itself. So, thank you very much, and I'm happy to take questions now too, if anyone has them.
Thank you, thank you very much, that was very well thought out, and very clear to me anyways, are there any questions from the board?
I don't have a question, but I, I went to the site, and I saw the size of the document, and I drilled in at Newbury, and, and, um, the data that's captured there is incredible. It's significant, it's important, it's well-written, Martha, the team you assembled is, uh, an outstanding job capturing what, what the risks are, and, and, uh, what, what, what we need to do, and I think the, it's, uh, we need to pay a lot of attention to this, because it's real.
Thank you, and yes, I'd like to echo the work that the team did, um, we've, uh, we had incredible engagement from the, from the team, the local planning team. Um, red line editing, reviewing everything, making additions that only someone who really is local, um, would know, so, um, that is definitely a reflection of your team's efforts, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'd also like to commend Hannah and Cece for all their hard work, and, you know, leading, leading us through the process. We had, uh, you know, several workshop meetings, as well as individual things, and a lot of emails back and forth.
As many, sorry.
Hannah has written War and Peace here, it's really very. Um, but they've done a terrific job, um, and not only with us, but with the other communities as well, it's been a Herculean effort, so, thank you.
It's a good process, very fun.
Alicia, I would like to thank our local team, and I know how hard Cece and Hannah have been working, cause I'm familiar with Merrimack Valley planning. And they've done such a great job, and you think I'm gonna speak about erosion, or the Great Marsh, and all that stuff, but, one of the things you highlighted here, and we really take for granted, is drinking water. And we have a lot of wells in our town, and we take drinking water for granted. Thank you very much for highlighting that.
Well, thank you for your time, and, oh.
Just a quick question, the, um, and it's been a topic in the paper recently, and that is the, uh, the sewage overflow upriver. And, and how they measure it, and what it's doing to our local beaches, and, and is, is there any, how is that going, where's it going?
Great opportunity for you to talk.
How do we get?
Hannah's, Hannah's the girl that measures it.
Yeah, 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 so I'm just, I, I, you know, I haven't had time to study the plan yet, but, but that, that seems like that that is a massive problem, that's gonna take billions of dollars to fix. And I'm just wondering how we're gonna go about doing it.
Yeah, it's a great question, and what's really interesting about doing a regional approach to this plan is we've been able to see all the communities upstream too, cause you know, we're doing this planning with Haverhill and Lawrence as well. And see what they're putting in their plans to address this, as well as communities down the river. So it's definitely something that all of our river, Merrimack bordering communities are thinking about. Some actually have to address the infrastructure aspect, and they are. Um, they are, they have, um, plans that are actually put in place by, I believe the EPA?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
But, uh, and they're put in place by the EPA that they have to meet certain requirements to actually reduce their discharge every year, and so they're actively working towards those. Some are, are more low-hanging fruit, um, there's infrastructure projects that aren't as in-depth that they can do, but some are, like you said, billions of, millions of dollars, that they're gonna have to be putting into this infrastructure. So I think it will be a slow process, um, but what I can say is Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, and a lot of our collaborators, like the Merrimack River Watership Council, are actively measuring and going out and sampling. And so we are trying to make sure it's more transparent, the information we have around the safety and the condition of the river, almost on a kind of, um, immediate time scale. So it's, uh, I know that Newbury put, um, an action in their plan to try to make sure that there's more education and transparency for their community, um, in terms of, of what the safety is at the access points in Newbury as well, so. There's more things in the plan, I'm happy to talk with you more, but it's definitely on our radar.
And just one follow-up question, wha- what Massachusetts is doing with the, you know, the housing, and the increased housing requirements that, that we need, is that, i- is anybody looking at the, like, just the sewage issue alone? And drinking water is another, you know, on, with, with the increase in the population, I would hope that someone's looking at getting the infrastructure up to speed before we add thousands of homes to the Merrimack Valley, it just.
Yeah, no, I know it's definitely something that's on the state's radar, and I think Martha might be able to speak to this more for Newbury, but the idea is that this, um, act is going in, into place, and communities have to zone for it. But realistically, there might be limitations based on your, um, uh, water, you know, potable water supply, based on what you can actually do for sanitation, that might limit what is actually able to be developed. So that is a consideration, and there is some exemptions as part of that, but I don't know if you wanna speak more to that, Martha, than I can, for Newbury.
Yeah, um, not too much, I mean, as, as we know, most of our town is on, on septic system, so, you know, we are fully expecting that, um, that, that will put a limitation on, on the development here. There's no requirement for us to put the infrastructure in place, it was just to get the zoning in place. But it's something, actually, it's something that Marshall looked at years and years ago, and we were talking about increased development and, um, you know, sort of specialized septic systems, and, and that kind of thing.
We done, I had done a study on, um, existing septic systems of, of different scales, and what would be applicable to use in Newbury to increase the potential housing stock we have in the town. And there, there are quite a few possible solutions, uh, and so that, that is ongoing work to, to see what, if anything, we would fit into the town to, to make that, uh, happen.
The technology evolves, and gee, since you've looked at it.
It, it does evolve and change, but not as much as you might think, because the, the essential part of it is still a biological process.
Yeah.
And I don't know if centralizing that is the answer either, in some ways now, for a town like ours, I mean, not to answer Dana's question, cause no one would agree with me. But I've always said that all those towns upriver should have restricted commercial and residential growth until they fix their problems with the river. And that would be like a lightning strike, in other words, you can't build anymore houses until you fix your sewer, so. That was sort of my point, thanks Jeff, that, that's exactly what I was thinking about. I, I would say, and I can't say it, cause I'm probably wrong, but where are one of the major rivers that are polluted, anywhere in the country, right here?
Um, I don't, I, I can speak for our region, and I can say yes, but I don't know across the entire. the entire country.
I mean, how many, I mean, it's hard to, but how many towns are there in New Hampshire too? There's how many? There's quite a few, right? We forget.
Anyone know total number?
It's gotta be like fifty.
Like, how many?
Yeah, Cece guesses fifty.
Probably upwards of fifty, in the headwaters, yeah.
I mean, it's crazy.
That feed into the Merrimack.
Yes, that causes complications.
Yeah, but you don't hit the first wastewater treatment plant until Manchester, I believe. And Manchester and Lowell are the real heavy hitters.
This is really going out there, but I'd love to know how the, how the biomedical waste gets into the river.
Yeah.
And washes onshore.
I'll tell you this, Alicia, and I don't want to say where, but we happen to be testing microplastics in the rivers upriver. And we happen to go by the discharge tunnel, or when the sewer overflows. It's as tall as this room. You can drive a boat in it, and it gets filled with raw sewage into the river.
Sorry I brought it up.
No, no, I can, I can say with all the communities we're working with, all of them want a solution. It's where do we find the money to do it? But all of them in good faith, I mean, for a lot of those communities upriver, that is the source of their drinking water.
Right.
You know? And so that's, that's something that they're, yes, they're polluting into it, but they're also pulling it from it, from their residents to drink, so they care, they really care.
The crazy part though, too, is within less than a week afterwards, it restores itself, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Which is absurd.
Better days, yeah.
The water test goes, a plume goes way up and then like within, it comes right back down.
Thank God.
It's crazy.
Small miracles. Yeah. Is there any other questions?
Steve, go on.
Steve?
If I may, one of the members of the Conservation Commission for Newbury has often raised the issue of what Newbury Port is putting out into the river, near where the river goes into the sea. And given the concerns about water quality and how it affects Newbury and its beaches, I think I noticed Newbury Port wasn't part of the effort, and I'm wondering how the concerns of what Newbury Port, some of which comes from Newbury and Plum Island, factors into some of these hazard mitigation for the combined overflow.
So there's.
Are they working on it, or?
There's fifteen communities within the Merrimack Valley Planning Region. As you mentioned, only ten were involved in this regional update. Those other five have either completed their update already, because they got ahead of that kind of five-year requirement, or they're actively doing it now, so they are planning. In terms of Newbury Port's plan, they don't have CSO events, so they are discharging, but they're discharging processed or cleaned water. So it's the same as any other wastewater treatment plant.
Right, though, again, one of the commissioners has talked about, shall we say, brown water bubbling up in the river, perhaps out by the toothpick or something. I don't know exactly where, but he made it sound like it wasn't exactly well-treated water that was being discharged.
Yeah, I don't know enough. I know they're following the compliance to put it out, but I, I haven't seen firsthand, so I'm not sure.
I couldn't talk to you offline, and you can speak to him in a meaningful way.
I do know they are, they, Newbury even put forth maybe an idea to test water quality in terms of nutrients, kind of in the Plum Island basin, because there we are seeing a lot of marsh erosion in that spot, and the idea is that we might have high amounts of nutrients. So it might be coming from upstream, farther upstream, or closer, we don't know, but I know that is one thing that the town has put forth as a, a potential idea.
Right, well, when I think of the ongoing closure of the drop of flats, I think, well, where's the likely source that's causing that to be an ongoing closed, wonderful place to get clams in theory?
Yeah.
And look across the river.
Yeah, we have a lot come under the Merrimack, that's for sure.
It's a long river, Steve.
Oh, I know, I grew up on it.
And Newbury Port's plan is complete. It was complete last year. We, we dated them in that effort. So we do have a good idea of the plan's contents, if you want to talk about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody interested in making comments? If you didn't find the links or you have questions, please reach out to David at the Town of Newbury, and he can give you the, give you the correct link to go make your comments. Okay, old business, there's none. Town administrators report, is there one, David?
I just had one brief update, wanted to put it on everybody's radar. The Mass Department of Transportation will be repaving and redoing the intersection of Hanover and Route One. They expect to start right at the beginning of July. They're only going to work Fridays through Sundays, potentially four weekends throughout the summer. They want to be done before school starts in the fall, because there will be some closures on Hanover Street. I'm in the process of getting circulation plans for detours from them. I'll post those on the website when I have them. So just an update, that'll be happening throughout the summer, but we're expecting to get signs out, the flashing orange signs indicating what's going to happen, starting on Monday, hopefully.
They provide those, right?
Mast dot will provide those. We're pushing so they can get them out at least two weeks in advance of the paving happening, or any, any kind of milling or staging.
Yeah.
Is, is there paving gonna be going on at the traffic circle too, do you know?
It's already going on.
I believe that will be complete.
It's been carved up already.
Yeah, that's what I need.
Yeah.
I believe that will be complete. They've worked their way, I think, north down to south, and this is their next, their next project. I will say, for anybody who notices anything going on, it's going to be a different type of intersection. We've been chosen as an experimental test community for this intersection.
Oh, just great.
So they're going to take up the asphalt, which I guess has a tendency to get wavy due to heavy truck traffic braking at that intersection, and replace it with.
Gravel.
Five, not quite, 5,000 PSI, nine-inch-thick concrete slab throughout the entirety of it. So it'll look different, so if anybody asks, that's what the material will be.
That'll be slippery.
Prevent, like color.
Yeah.
To prevent waviness.
Yeah, and I think just general wear and tear. It's expected to last at least three times as long if it, if it works. So we'll be experimenting with that.
As long as the frost.
They had concrete highways for a reason, they get rid of them, you know, like, so.
Yeah, I think the process that they're doing, however far down they're digging back, filling with gravel, hopefully will alleviate any kind of frost weeks, but we'll see.
May I ask a question, David? The Larkin Dam, what is the, what's the process going on there? Is that in?
It's in process. The conservation agent for the town right now is looking to get reimbursed for work already completed. There's work that will start again, starting in the new fiscal year, so we're picking that up.
Which will be the first of July.
Yeah.
Is, is when that's going to begin?
Very soon.
Do you expect, you know, detours or issues with, with Larkin and Parish Road and the, you do?
No, I, I was just acknowledging that. I, I don't have those details right now. I do know we've been working with Mast dot on impacts to downstream to 95, where it goes under the bridge. So that's where we are down. Martha, I don't know if you have a further update?
I don't, actually.
Okay. So I think ongoing.
And that's not going to happen until 2025, right?
Yes, so there's, there's design work and things going on now through our engineering company.
Thank you.
Yeah, future updates to come.
Okay. All right, correspondence, there's none. Meeting updates. I have some, but does anybody else have some meeting updates? Did you have Essex that meeting at all? No?
No, we haven't.
Anybody else?
The only thing I can contribute on that is the library playground is now open, and the kids can go and try out the new equipment.
Okay. On 5/31, May 31st, there was a facility subcommittee meeting at Triton, and I didn't attend that. David, do you have any?
Sure. Yeah, I attended the meeting, most of which was to talk about potential alternative scenarios, should or should we not pass through the MSBA process. So the consultant, the architect that they've hired, is going to do a space needs assessment for Triton. There's an assumption, maybe internally, this could be correct or not, I'm not sure, I'm not an expert in space needs analysis, that some parts of Triton may be oversized, and then some parts could be retrofitted or re-functioned for other functions according to MSBA standards. So for instance, Triton has two gyms. MSBA would probably recommend that they do not have two gyms. So it's going to be a community-based kind of effort to weigh, what does the community want to see versus what do we do to comply with MSBA should we get those funds? That's an if. The community and the school district doesn't have to accept going into the MSBA process. They could choose to do something else entirely different and go on their own dime. So part of the exercise was to look at what would the match contribution be to MSBA versus what could you get for all three communities, just pooling resources based on what the community needs and wants for that building. That was pretty much the size of it. There's takeaway work from there. There'll be a project update from the architect. I believe Brian Forge is pulling together another meeting to give us updates when he gets the space needs analysis back.
Okay, so there'll be another meeting after that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I have a quick little update on the Pink House. I'm trying to pull together a meeting with the federal and state delegation. That still remains to be seen. Once there's more information, I'll pass that along. Review and approve meeting minutes. We have draft minutes from April 9th, and I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on these minutes? April 9th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then, minutes from April 30th?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And draft minutes from May 28th?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Can we have discussion?
Yep.
David and I spoke about a couple tweaks to it, to the May 28th minutes.
All right, which, what page are you on?
Page two.
Okay, so this is the May 20?
Reorganization.
Hold on.
Bottom, second motion from the bottom. It wasn't clear who was the vice chair, who was elected as vice chair.
So I've updated that in a new version. I can either read it aloud or pass it out. Unless Bill wants to take the wheel and you can craft something.
No, no, what you do is fine.
Okay, so.
So you want to just amend it?
Yeah, yeah.
The amendment reads now, as Jeffrey Walker moved to nominate William DeMayo for vice chair, Alicia Greco seconded, Leslie Matthews nominated herself, Dana Packard seconded. The original motion to nominate William DeMayo as vice chair passed. Dana Packard and Leslie Matthews voted no. That was the update. Bill incorrect, it was not clear what happened.
Okay.
And the other, the other correction was on page five. It would be the first, second, third, fourth motion from the top. Michaela Early is mentioned twice. The second time it should have been Ryan Kelly.
Okay.
And I think David's corrected that.
I did update that.
So.
Okay, so.
The set of minutes that David has pre-approved are good to go.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Lawrence, motion to sign, Lawrence?
Motion to sign, Lawrence, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.